Okay, I'd like to call this 2022 Budget Work Session Order. I want to welcome tonight Larry West, the Business Administrator, John Judge, the Superintendent of the Scranton Fire Department, and Leonard Nemecha, the Superintendent of the Scranton Police Department. So tonight is another night in the series of budget hearings that we've been having and budget work sessions that we've been having where we've had an opportunity to dive a little bit deeper into the budgets for each department within the city. So as I stated last week, I appreciate the administration's willingness to work with council and to go through the budgets and explain the rationale for anything that's changed from last year. So I'll turn it over to Mr. West for any opening remarks, and then we'll start with the Police Department and Chief Nemecha.
Thank you, President Gahn. I appreciate the opportunity to be here again tonight. I couldn't be more honored to be sitting here with a couple of gentlemen who have spent their careers protecting the lives and the families and the folks who've come into the city over the last couple of decades. I won't tell your ages, but they've been here a few years, so I appreciate them being here, and I'm honored to be here with them tonight. So a couple of things that I'd like to just mention before we get started here tonight. Providing counsel and the folks at your solicitor, a copy of some changes that we would like to read off of tonight related to the budget that was proposed, but some of the numbers that he had asked about, we went to some looking into, did change in some of the reflection of some of the numbers that just didn't, weren't jiving. So we went back and did a double take on them. So what you see is a top sheet that basically depicts some of the changes that are in it, understanding that council will have to go through a series of amendments and procedural things, understood, but I just want to let you know what it is that's up there that we're going to talk about tonight. And I believe both of our chiefs could talk to some of the numbers as it relates to some of their capital expenditures and some of the things we're looking to do with the department. So if you don't have any, anything else, I'd like to turn it over to, oh, go ahead.
So I don't understand this, Larry. It says top line numbers for police and fire operating budgets.
Yep.
What is that?
So let me just, let me tell you what it was, and I'm not sure why, what the, where the top line comes in there, that's not my couch on it, but so, so the operating budget was, what it was submitted from, that's online, it's actually officially submitted to council. And then what you have here is what we're looking to amend it to. So these are more, these are a more accurate depiction of what they ought to be, not what it is that is proposed.
And do you have a, do you have a breakdown of what constitutes the, so for the Police Department, you have the, what was submitted to us, and then it says amended difference $325,063.70. Do you have a breakdown of what constitutes?
So I could certainly talk to you about what the amendments are, yes. So there were some changes too, obviously, if you look on the first one as an example, the standard salary. So I just tried explaining here to some folks in the audience the difference in it. So you had asked a question last week about police, and we could get into this a little bit. So why there was an increase in the 2022 budget in terms of standard salary, the simple, although complicated answer is both fire and police had, under their last contract, had a raise in January, and then they had a raise in July. So the budget, standard salary for 2021, what that had shown was the standard salary of a rate in the first six months that was lowered in the second six months for all of the employees. So in 2022, why there was an increase is that had to reflect the difference in the first six months that the full salary had not been, had not been exposed in the first six months of the year. So that's the difference that you see in 2022. It does not reflect an increase on any contractual negotiations based on any new contractual negotiations, they are from the prior contract. So that's what, that's what's reflected there. So you'll see there's a, there's a slight uptick in both fire and police as it relates to standard salaries, they both had a contract that had a split increase throughout the year for their, for their employees. You'll also see a basic, there's, as you come down, there's also a difference in the amount that we paid in the city pensions for both, they've both been, PD had gone up a couple, a couple of dollars and the Fire Department had gone down. So what you're looking at, the difference from what you was proposed for police, there's an increase in expenditures for $325,063.70, and conversely, the, the Fire Department's budget has a decrease of $155,8 even. So that's, there's the contrast between, and that's what that front page is basically articulating to you. So you understood where it was at, and I know that the two, the two chiefs and everyone at council has a copy of what I just brought up to you, what we just talked about. So that's what we're here to talk, and maybe we could get some additional clarity based on what we provided for you tonight.
Yeah.
I understand, again, that there's a whole series of amendments and procedural things that have to happen, but just so we're clear when we're having the discussions, that we're clear from the Fire Department.
And so you'll provide us, though, with those amendments that have to be made to correct this?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I mean, you know, I'm not, I know that you weren't here last year, but this had, the same thing happened last year.
Yeah, well, this, I was not, and so-
Right, I understand that.
But this, but this, these pages I sent to you today should reflect accurately.
Now, does this, I know that next week we're going to meet with several other departments, we already met with the DPW, are there any other changes outside of police and fire that have to be made to correct any?
There will be a couple more changes. The DPW was, was actually fairly accurate. There was a, there was a glitch in the, in the sheets as they went over. You may have a couple more changes in the BAs as it relates to some human resources. There was, there was just some small discrepancies in it, but nothing, nothing, nothing to the degree that the police and fire had as it relates to their transition. So DPW and a single tax office, the Fire Department and the Police Department, all four are currently under contract negotiation. So as it relates to their salaries, aside from what I just explained to you regarding last year's contract with the split raises, there are no raises for any of the four unions that are currently under negotiation in this budget.
Okay. Okay, so it's mainly standard salary then?
Yep.
Is where, okay, in the pension. Okay, we'll turn it over to Chief Nemecha if you want any opening remarks, and then I, we have a few questions about the budget.
Good evening, council. Pleasure being here today, just here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
I'm assuming now that, I have a few questions to start, so I'm assuming, Larry, on the, I'm just receiving this new budget that you have here. The, in the budget that was given to us, that was posted officially on the agenda under the Police Department, the position title page, it stated that the regular patrolman total is $914,982.12.
Yep.
So that was obviously incorrect. Was that changed? I haven't got a chance to look at it yet.
You know, that changed, so if you look on the second page of what I gave you for police, it'll be the backup on the salaries. So just so you know that that was only wrong in the backup, it wasn't wrong, the transition from the backup over to what was actually submitted for the budget. So although the backup and the revenue, or the salary piece is indeed part of the salary packet, the number that transitioned over to the actual operating general fund budget, minus the small $200,000 that was moved over, that was not moved over for the raises, that all that happened there was the number did not just transition over. So that the, it was actually wrong on the backup.
Okay.
But it has been corrected on page two.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with the Police Department. There's a new neighborhood police sergeant, chief for $80,326.05. Is that a new position? How does that work?
That'll be a new position that will be negotiated with the contract.
Okay, and so it has not been negotiated yet?
No, sir.
Okay. And neighborhood police sergeant, that's, you have not had that in, in your budget before, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what would that position entail?
Currently, the neighborhood police beats are supervised by a shift sergeant, excuse me, one of the four sergeants that are on the shifts. This would now be a specific supervisor dedicated to those officers to deal with the issues that we have in the neighborhoods, blight issues, any neighborhood issues that come to mind, that they would directly supervise those officers, make sure they're doing their details, make sure they're being more proactive in the neighborhoods that they serve.
Okay. And you hire within the department? Is this like a promotional type thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I have other questions, but Mark is the, do you have any questions, Mark? Mark is the Public Safety Chairman. Go ahead, Mark.
First of all, thank you for coming. I'm sorry, thank you for coming. As Chairman of Public Safety Committee, I want to thank both of you. I mean, I honestly believe that both departments are probably one of the best in this, in the state, and I honestly believe that. So I had a question, I had that same question about the neighborhood police sergeant, so thank you for answering that. I have a couple other questions.
Could I just bring up that neighborhood police thing real quick, Mark?
Sure.
Just because looking at the changes, that's not in the one that you just provided us, but it's in the salary breakdown for the original one that we introduced.
That is correct. It wasn't the original one, that is still on the table. We were looking to see if we could get that paid with OECD money, if you remember that.
Yeah.
So that was, that did appear in the other budget, it's not in this one, but it still would be under the ranks of PD, so it's still a fair question.
Okay, but it won't add-
It's still, it's still relevant, it just doesn't show up here because we're paying for it out of OECD.
But it, but it won't add to the standard salary-
Correct.
-line item like it was originally, right?
So you're paying, you're paying for that out of OECD funds?
So we were looking to see if we could pay for it out of OECD funds. It's a, it's a neighborhood patrol sergeant that, for low moderate income, yes, we're looking to see if we could pay it out of OECD funds.
Okay, but right now in the budget we have in front of us, is it paid out of standard salary or OECD funds?
It's out of OECD funds. So you just lost, I know, I know it's going to be a bit confusing to it, but you can still ask the question, it's still relevant, but it would be under OECD. That sergeant that we just referred to, the additional sergeant.
And like you just stated, it also has to be negotiated with the contract as well?
Correct.
So the two, is it, if it's negotiated into the contract and it is a new position going into next year, are we going to be using OECD funds for it?
Correct.
So that's been approved, we know that that's correct?
Well, has it, has it been approved? No, what we found is that we can pay for it, that's, we found out we can pay for it there.
So are there two options, or that's the option the city's going to go with?
That's the only option the city's going to go with.
Okay.
If it's approved, Mr. Schuster.
Okay, so I'll start with Chief Nemecha because, Chief Judge, I know you're going to talk about the SAFER Grant, so that'll, I'm sure use a lot of time, so. Chief Nemecha, so last week, administration was here, and they said that they're actively negotiating with the public safety unions. I'm hearing that no meetings have actually taken place yet, except for maybe one today, which was presented by Willis Towers, which was healthcare. I propose, now, is that proposal the same as the one that they proposed to the clerks or something similar? And then my second question with that is, so I'm worried about what, something that might impact the budget. So there's an arbitration last year where the public safety healthcare committees were not involved in the selection process of the new healthcare administrator, Willis Towers Watson. So that's, that's coming soon. What happens if they win? How will that affect the budget? In the budget, the healthcare numbers remain the same as last year also that I'd noticed.
Hey, what was that?
Yes.
Mark and Larry, and I know, Larry, you know this, and I know Mark knows this, I just want to make sure. You shouldn't divulge any, any internal conversations that are happening as part of the current contract negotiations. That's clearly exempted from public, from public disclosure.
I don't want to know the specifics, but what happens?
So I just, let me just give you-
It goes either way. How will that affect the budget?
To answer your question, I'm not sure why they, they said that there hasn't been a good, no negotiation, because that, that's not true. I will say that due to locations and there was some pushback based on mask wearing mandates and a few other things, as we have tried to get all the principles together, we've had some issues getting some, some time, but to say that there's been nothing is not necessarily accurate. And to Attorney Hayes's point, to divulge where, what some of these negotiations are as to how we determine what's best for the city in terms of contractual agreements, that's something that has to be negotiated with the department and the union, and, you know, disclose things publicly at this point, I don't think is, is the right thing to do.
Well, I'm just asking whether they'd be, being done in a timely manner. Okay, so you said they are, and that's fine, but-
Well, certainly we're aware, and everything is, you know, in the contract negotiations, everything is on the table, so certainly, you know, the administration's aware that there may be some, some things that change within the budget, and we're preparing to answer for them.
Okay.
Okay.
And Chief Judge, so maybe I'll let you speak first of the-
Let's, does anyone else have any questions for the, that's okay, for the police, for Chief Nemecha? Okay.
I just have-
Go ahead.
Just two quick ones. Chief, the, the line item for the services and maintenance fee goes up about $52,000. Is there a reason for that?
Service and maintenance, we're going up. Yeah, with the 130.
So if I, if I could answer that one?
Just, yeah, just what they, yeah, whatever that covers.
So, right, so if you look at what we had, what we were tracking through, through September 30th, you'll see we're tracking a bit high on it. I believe when, when Mrs. McMullin ran through that, it didn't reflect even September's full number, so we were just accounting for it to change and adding to the line item to make sure there's sufficient funds in there. It was tracking high coming through the, through the first half of the year.
Okay, is, so is that the same for the training and certification?
Yeah, so, so, no, training and certification, I could-
Or are we adding something to?
No, we're adding something in there.
Okay.
We're adding 10 positions for looking at future, not, excuse me, retirements for next year, and that 10 positions there are going to be to send people to the Act 120 program. So we're going to fund that from the budget.
Okay.
If I could just elaborate on that, and that's a, that's a great point. The, last year, we, we paid for six-
Six, correct.
Six cadets. So the mayor, mayor, again, wanted to be committed to it, trying to attract quality candidates, has decided to put that back in the budget, and that's what's reflected in that line. It wasn't in that line item last year, the dollars appear in the line item this year, properly.
Okay.
So I guess to stay on that same, on the same topic of police, and this question probably goes to Mr. West, does the, the healthcare coordinator arbitration, does that affect the budget in any way?
Again, we're not divulging too much of, part of the contract, all I'll say to you is that it could. Not saying that it will, but it could.
Okay, do we have a timeline for acceptance of the new contract in, in terms of the budget being passed and?
No. Again, it's a negotiation, it's a process, certainly would, recognizing the sensitivity of, would love to, you know, get it done as, as quickly as we can, but obviously, there's a, there are a lot of, there are a lot of things that, that impact scheduling. Obviously, now we're back in the holiday season, we have, you know, folks that, we have attorneys, we have vacations, we have holidays, we have all things, so we're doing our best to make sure that we can stay on track and to continue to have those conversations, but I do not have a timeline for you.
Overtime, overtime's going up to almost a million dollars. The Police Department spent as of the end of October, according to Controller Mervis' report, about 1.1 million, and we only had 700,000 budgeted. Now, I understand some of that's reimbursable, but can you just talk about issues with overtime going over budget and why it's going up for next year?
The reasons for the overtime that we saw this year were, we were short-staffed officers. We were down 12 officers to begin with, coming in with through retirements, you know, officers let go, and that nature there. So we had to send six officers, actually, there was eight officers that were in the police academy, six that we put through right now, and then we had two graduate a few months ago, so that, that still leaves us with three vacancies in the Police Department. We're looking to push three more through the Act 120 program in January. So we're, we're still working behind that, along with the people that we have out on disability, administrative leave, and light duty is the reason why we're short those officers.
Okay, and next year, it goes up to 950. Are you expecting similar issues for next year?
Right now, we're looking to have that, the staffing back up except for those three, and we're looking to move, you know, people from the disability, either to replace them, get them back working, so we're working on that on a daily basis.
How many retirements are expected for 2022? How many retirements are expected?
In fact, we're looking, we're scheduling at least 10, we could see, you know, maybe fewer, but we're projecting to be at least 10 right now.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add, and I was just elaborate on the chief's point here, the fact that we're already missing three, we have the potential for 10 retirees, we do have some, some of the officers that are out on, on short-term disability, so to your point, Council President Gahn, there, there is opportunity or potential for some overtime, especially early on, first half of the year. And I want to add one more thing that really wasn't, wasn't really reflected in last year's budget in terms of timing, or even the year before, was the fact that we had a lot of our community events were canceled because of COVID. Obviously, they were starting to pick back up. Not every, not every community event such as the marathon and the half marathon, not all of them did come back this year, but we anticipate having those additional, those additional services required for next year. So we did, we did account for that as well.
Okay, thank you. Chief, could you, and I know we spoke about this previously, could you talk to us about the capital expenditures line item, the 538,750? It's a program that I know we spoke about, but can you inform council and the public of what the plans are for that amount?
Well, we're looking at purchasing four vehicles this year for the Police Department to maintain the fleet. Throughout that also, we're looking at maybe some signage, you see the portable signs that we see at headquarters, that mobile sign, but we're looking to purchase a few more of those to get them out in the neighborhoods, where we could get that message out on a sign, also with radar, that you can see what the speed is doing, so we could get that public message out, anything that comes about, any, any alerts that we need to send out, we could do that out in the neighborhoods themselves. Also looking at putting one of those signs permanently at Police Headquarters, the message board signs.
Okay, so that makes up the, the total for the capital expenditures, those projects that you just mentioned?
It, it could, give or take, depending on where we go with that.
Okay. How about an update on the Sereni Center, the, the public safety building project? I know we received one maybe a month or two ago. Could you just let us know who's in there right now, how that is operating and how that's going, since there's been a lot of grant money and city work up there?
Well, I could, the only thing I could come on is the Milo Range System that we have in there right now. That room has been completed. We have the Milo System where it's a de-escalation training simulator, where we're hoping to get that out to the community, excuse me?
Oh, no, he just coughed.
I'm sorry, that caught my ear. So we do have that room completed right now. Mr. West, you could answer the rest of the building and the schedule?
Yeah, so I believe, and don't hold me to it, I wasn't prepared to think about Serenti tonight, but I believe it was, it's either eight or 10 phases of, of construction, I think around phase four or five at this point. There, there were some grants that were, that were awarded to help offset either electrical or HVAC or both. That's kind of where it's at at this point. I know there's also a contract out there to allow for some painting. I know part of the work has been done, I did get a tour of the facility, I know there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but we're, again, that, that, I mean, the facility itself is obviously an asset to the city, and I believe there's an opportunity in the future for it to do some training and all kinds of other things that, that may be, may be a revenue center for the city at some point, but at this point, you know, allocating our own resources is a difficult thing to do. We're doing the best we can to allow for, because there are, there are local, there are municipal match or government match that has to go with, that comes out of our, out of our general fund or out of some revenues that we have that would need to match some of those grants, not all of them, the LSA grant is matchless, but there are other grants that require match. And then some of the grants that we did have and did not allow for, did not cover the entire expense, as everyone's aware, everything, everything, the cost of everything has gone up, including, including contractors' work and supplies. So in order for us to do the job and do it correctly, we, we did have to put a pause. I do know that there was, there was just some recent talk about it, about reinvigorating it for next spring to see if we can't get an additional grant application to help offset some of the costs to keep that project going.
Okay. If I could just bounce off that, I know we've been asking about the Sereni Center for a while to receive an update, and I know, as you stated, that you weren't, you know, fully prepared to give details on that tonight, but at some point, I, I would appreciate, you know, more detailed breakdown of the phases, what work still needs to be done, what grants we might be going for to cover that work, and then what expected deadlines there are, like when we're looking at a completion of it, when we might use it for the, the community, things like that would be really helpful, likely for, for council to know, and the kind, kind of information that we've been looking for, just to have a better overall view and scope of the project.
Dr. Rato, I appreciate you bringing that up, I think that, so that was, the Serenti Center was something that a couple of years ago, my, my prior, my prior world at one time was a priority in the city to get, to get access to it and get control of it, site control, and do start doing some work on it. I agree, I think there's a lot more, there's a lot more potential up there than, than we, you know, currently could see, but if we could get through the budget process, we do have a project manager on it, Alexis Antonello is, is our lead on it from the administration. I'm glad to get with her, we'll come up with, we'll come up with an agenda, and I'm glad to bring her to council to give a full update, maybe even lay out, you know, what's, what our next steps are for that project.
Yes, that, that would be very helpful for us. I understand that hasn't been as much of a priority, and there may have been some holdups with-
Yeah.
-with COVID, and, but there is a lot that we've already put into it, and, you know, we would like to see that fulfilled and just have a better idea of-
Sure.
-where we are.
I mean, I'm glad to arrange that. It may not be till the first quarter next year, but I'm glad to arrange that.
That's understandable, I think we just want to see that happen.
Sure.
Thank you.
Chief, can you talk about the statistics in terms of gang activity in the city, violent crime, what the trends have, look like over the last few years, and what they're looking like moving forward, how you see that, how things are going there?
Well, we did see a little increase, you know, the violent crime, but I have some statistics here from our street crime unit, that's been going on actively, well, from January through November that I could give you. Now, we have 270 criminal arrests, out of that, there's 81 felonies, we seize 24 firearms. Now, this, this team is specifically for interdictions with drugs and, and weapons, so they're a busy team, there's a team of three at this point. We're looking at many narcotic seizures, marijuana, cocaine, fentanyl, heroin, methamphetamines, spice. We, our narcotic street value that we have seized is $301,000. Out of the, the currency also seized, that we're looking at $50,000 of currency that have been seized. So we do see some increase in, in some of the violent crime there, the weapons, you know, some shooting calls and so forth, however, you know, we have made several arrests, you know, soon after those calls, if not, there are active investigations, and they're, they're wrapped up rather quickly.
Okay, thank you. On our agenda tonight, we have a piece of legislation where the city is entering into a contract with the company to provide translation services for the Police Department. I think it's Agenda Item Five, Five I, Effective LLC. And I was looking that over, do you know, do we provide those services currently, or is this something new?
Yes, we provide them right now with a company at Astra. This is just a new contract with a new vendor.
Okay.
And that, that's, that's not just for the Police Department, that's citywide, that you could use as translation interpretation services.
Okay, and how does that work? If someone calls into the Police Department, or if a police officer has to go to a call where the person doesn't speak English, you call into someone and they?
Right, if we, if we respond to an incident in the city and there is a translation barrier, we, first, we have to identify what language that they're speaking, and then once we do that, we're able to call the, the service, the language service, let them know what we're doing, and they would provide that service either through telephone or video conferencing. They also do some translation with documents as well, but that's how they would make that initial contact with a phone.
Okay, so we're currently doing that, we're just doing it with a different company, this is a new contract with a new company?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. One of the things that has come up here within the last few months is obviously the pandemic and the vaccination rates of the Police and Fire Department. We did get an update not too long ago. Can you update us on how many members of the Police Department are vaccinated, or could you give us a percentage?
We're at 74% vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
74%?
Yes.
Fully vaccinated, okay. I know that there are several cameras throughout the city, one in my neighborhood at McLean Park's been very helpful. Can you talk about how many cameras operate throughout the city in terms of our park, how that works in our park systems? And then does someone from the Police Department monitor that 24/7 down at Headquarters?
Excuse me, well, we have several, well, many cameras downtown, throughout the downtown neighborhood, on the pole cameras. Then we also have cameras out in the neighboring parks. Also, we have the feed coming in from the, the bus station. Now, at police headquarters, there's a video wall above the officers, sitting at the station and behind them with all the different feeds that are coming in. So at any given time, you know, somebody could be watching that. There's a, that position's there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So at any given time, if there's an incident, they could look at the cameras, take control of the camera, zoom in on that, and then, you know, identify any suspects or anything that might be happening.
Okay. And I know we had spoken about a project that the police department was looking to do in terms of the body cameras. Is that included in this budget anywhere? Or is that something separate?
No, that's not in the budget at this time.
It was not in, it's not in the budget?
No, that, so that, that project from its original concept has, has increased in costs significantly. So we're looking at other options to find ways to help offset some of those costs. It's a significant investment. It is over four years, five, three, five years? Which makes it, which makes it a bit more palatable, but it's still a significant increase. So we do not include it in this budget for this year. But it is still on the table for, for a capital investment at some point.
Okay, good. Does anyone else have any questions for Chief Nemecha?
I just have a quick one. So last month, when we changed the ordinance for the bars, during public comment, decibel meters were brought up a couple of times. Do we, does the police force have them and use them?
We clearly don't have them, we're in the process of getting some for the officers.
Okay. Thank you. I just want a clarification, because I, I heard that, you know, that they did or we didn't, or I just want clarification. Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry if you already answered this, but in terms of other salary, that, can you explain what that accounts for? I think it's for retirements and things like that. It's $350,000. Can you just speak to that?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what that's for, anticipating early retirements, buyouts, payout, yep.
Okay.
So we're anticipating an increase in the number of retirees for this year. Again, it's, it's, obviously, there's no, there's no forced retirement. So it's just, we're just being, trying to be fair to, yep.
Okay. Okay. You have this, you have this line item here, and I remember it was something that was put in, I think it was something new from last year, the special operations ammunition. And you've only spent about $5,000 and you budgeted $23,620. Is that something that you anticipate spending more on next year? Or is that all inclusive of the guns and ammunition line item? I think at one time it was just all in one.
Looking over the numbers here, that extra number is incorrect. We're close to the final amount of that budget item. I think there might be less than $2,000 left in that from our special operations division.
Oh, okay.
Councilman, I'm not sure how the, you know, the expenditures through a year, how they calculate them out of PD, but if, when we talk to the chief, that $23,000 is an accurate depiction of what they actually need.
Is an accurate depiction, you said?
It's accurate, it is accurate.
Okay.
Is there an error then in the police education allowance as well, where there's only been $1,400 spent to date?
The $1,400, yeah.
Yep. So that was, that's the salary, right?
No, that's, that's, the educational allowance, we're looking at the, from $50,000, we're going up to the $82,000. That's been underfunded for several years now. That's, that's why you see the increase there. The $1,400, I, I'm not-
Paid at the end of the year?
That gets paid at the beginning of the year, that's, that's per, no, degree.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's different from what you originally gave us, correct? Because it went from 50 to 82?
No, $32,000.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Just real quick, Chief, I know this isn't, you know, one of your main concerns, but it falls under your purview with animal control officers. Do we have enough during the summer months? I'm not saying we might need to add, but I know we did add a part-time in last year. And was that helpful? And, I mean, do we have enough in terms of animal control for those main summer months?
I would say to a degree that, you know, having a part-time officer there helped out tremendously to Katie. She does many investigations throughout the day. But then afterwards, having that second person there to follow up on different things that she can't get to is very beneficial.
All right, thank you.
If I could just add to that, Councilman, in just my short time here, I have met with both the, the, completely lost my train of thought here, yeah, animal control, but the animal shelter up in Scotttown.
Same cats.
Griffin Pond, thank you. And also with stray dogs and cats here. Both of those nonprofits had been in asking for an increase in support of funding that they have seen a large increase in terms of the work that's being seen out of the city. I don't know whether it was compared to last year or the years prior to, but I, I don't deal, you know, in, in public every day. But I've had several complaints about, about feral cats throughout the city. I'm sure you've all heard them as well. So I think anything that we're putting into the animal control piece-
You could come back and set up my deck in July and I'll tell, and I'll show you exactly what kind of feral cat problem we have.
So noted.
I don't believe I saw an increase in the line item for the stray cats.
That's true, there's not, but they've been asking for, I mean, every nonprofit, they is looking for additional dollars. We'll, you know, certainly do what we can to help them. But I'm just letting you know that their, their complaints were not unfounded, understood that there's, there's a concern and a need out there.
Okay, but if we have additional staff to, to help with the feral cats and animals in the city, don't we need a place for them to, to go to?
Are they looking for help collecting the animals? I don't think collecting the animals is the issue. I think it's the services they provide once they get the animals and the costs associated with the procedures and the things they do. That's where the issue was.
Isn't the reason for the increase because Griffin Pond stopped doing most of that that they used to do with the feral cats?
I can't speak to what Griffin Pond used to do. I know that, I just read an article recently that they are at full capacity again. So I don't think the issue is just in Scranton. I think it's a, I think it's an issue region-wide with, with, you know, animals that they're collecting. But the folks here in the city that are doing the spay and neutering up here at, up at Neog, those folks, they're, they volunteer most of their service. I mean, they volunteer their time, I should say their service, they volunteer their time. They're looking for help offset for the work that they do. And according to them, they're, they being the principals of the, of the organization, there's no shortage of work or animals from the city. So I just wanted to point that out, that both of those nonprofits have been asking for. Now, as far as, just so you know, with the, with Griffin Pond, I think last year there was an issue with payment to Griffin Pond, again, before my time, but there's an issue with payment or what the agreement was in terms of service. We have, Solicitor Escri and I have worked out some terms with them. We're gonna, we're gonna be doing, getting a quarterly update and invoice from Griffin Pond as opposed to, I think they were doing it either twice a year or once a year, I'm not sure. I think that's where, things where the mix-up came in. But we have agreed that we're gonna do a quarterly update with invoice from Griffin Pond.
And does that fall under the SPCA animal control line item? Is that?
I believe it is.
Is that Griffin Pond?
But yeah, I believe that's where it's at. Oh, for you here, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief Nemecha? Chief Judge, I'll turn it over to you if you have any opening remarks and then we'll take questions.
Yeah, good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. Hope I'm able to answer any of your questions regarding our proposals for the 2022 budget. I have some documents that I think might have been provided to you on kind of an update of what we have done for the year, kind of some of our initiatives and challenges that we've faced and some of the things that we're starting to work through at the Scranton Fire Department to provide a higher level of service to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Judge?
Well, I'd like you to explain the SAFER grant. We've heard from a couple of different entities-
Sure.
-how it can work or how it can't work.
So the SAFER grant has been funded by FEMA since right after 9/11. It's been re-appropriated every year since then. And I believe it was, it's scheduled to have additional appropriations this year under President Biden. Its intent is twofold. If you are a volunteer department, you can put in for recruitment and retention. And if you are a career or combination department that has, a combination department has both career and volunteer, you're able to put in to maintain staffing or to get to staffing levels that are compliant with what's called NFPA 1710, which is a consensus standard that's widely recognized across the nation. It's the National Fire Protection Association. What this outlines is the minimum requirement for a dwelling fire on what personnel based off of science, NIST studies, UL data, to be able to mitigate that incident in a timely manner to protect life and property. So that's where the initiative comes from and the appropriations have been every year. The city has applied for four of these grants now since 2012, I believe was the first year we put in for it. That was shortly after 35 members were laid off in the Scranton Fire Department and 15, we had 15 attrited positions. We had previously been at 150. The mayor at that time asked, or gave us permission to put in. We told him we were gonna put in for 50. It was the 35 attrited, or excuse me, the 35 laid off positions and the 15 attrited positions. Putting for the grant, we were awarded $8.1 million in SAFER funding. The mayor at the time decided that he did not want to fill the attrited positions, that he only wanted to fill the laid off positions. So city gave back a little over $3 million in that grant. And then shortly after that, I believe it was within eight to 10 months when the grant reopened, the city attempted to put in for another grant, SAFER grant, to get some of those positions back. And they were denied the funding. 2015, they put in for the grant again for 15 positions. They were awarded that under the previous mayor. And this year, we put in for 10 more positions. Every member that's been hired under the SAFER grant has been retained by the city of Scranton. They have not laid off as a, as a condition of that grant. There is no retention period once the three years is over. It pays full salary and benefits for all 10 of the members. Previous years, there were grant requirements, there was matching, there were two years. This grant cycle, the one that the city was awarded, is three years, full salary and benefits. And what we've been able to do in the past, previous chiefs have been able to do is because it pays salary and benefits, the benefit structure, the way the city is self-insured, typically when we have younger members, they don't require that much healthcare, fortunately. And what they've been able to do is extend those grants using those funds, because you can only draw them down for whatever is, whatever that is, salary or pension, or excuse me, salary or healthcare. So if they're not using healthcare, those funds are able to be used by doing an amendment through FEMA to be able to use it for salary. And we've been able to, in the past, extend those grants past three years, or two-year periods, whatever the period of performance was at the time. So that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. I can answer more specific for you, Councilman McCandrew, if you need.
Okay, so help me out here. So, okay, the SAFER grant is for three years.
Yes, sir.
Let me go back a little bit. So they, it wasn't, are you telling me, because I have, I have a problem understanding why three years can't become six and become nine? So you say it was awarded 8 million, they brought, they sent three back and then they applied for it again. Were they denied because they didn't use the money or?
I think, I think FEMA probably denied at that point. It's only my suspicion is because it was less than a year after the city had already sent back 3.1 million. They were still in the period of performance from that $8.1 million grant. And I think that that's why FEMA decided. The grants are competitive in nature, how they're written, they're calculated by a score and then they're placed under peer review. And then they fund them based off of the allocated funds and what the scoring was on the grant. So we've been successful three out of four, but I would dismiss that one where we turned around less than a year later to try and apply for more.
Thank you. So here's another question. So, okay, this, this grant's for three years for 10, for 10 firefighters.
That's correct.
All right. So what if, if the grant is awarded again, can that only, could that be used for the existing 10 fighters?
Yes.
Sustain them or is it for 10 new firefighters?
No, it could be used, they have different classifications, retention-
Okay.
-new hires, retention or new hires essentially, or attrited positions.
So this could be sustained if it's renewed, because it was, it would sustain the 10 that were already went through the first three years?
Correct.
All right, thanks for that clarification.
But you're not guaranteed to receive the grant?
That's correct.
So what you're saying is, in year four, if you don't, if you, in year four, if you want to retain these 10 positions, you can go for another SAFER grant to keep funding those 10 new firemen. You do not have to get a grant for additional personnel?
That's correct.
That is correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so-
And it would be based off the guidance, because the guidance does change over the years. The period of performances have changed over the years, where their priority lies as far as how their allocations go, career combination or volunteer departments. But FEMA does have the ability to change the criteria. So we would have to look at the criteria at that time.
Let me ask you about minimums, so per shift. So I know that recently Allentown won a Supreme Court ruling that, you know, they were able to increase their minimums per shift. Now, is that a process that's happening now within Scranton or being thought of?
The Allentown ruling is a little bit more complicated than just that. The Allentown ruling gave them, they gave a safe, they gave them a safe manning per piece of apparatus. They routinely will go below that based on number of people that are off sick or injured or long-term. What we're attempting to do with the grant is become more compliant with 1710. But the Allentown ruling is not something that we can sit here and explain in, in a short time. I'd be more than happy to sit with you, Councilman McCandrew, and explain the Allentown ruling to you. But it also allows, and it was similar, I believe, in Bethlehem, no, excuse me, Easton, where the, you know, if, if they were gonna be required, that they would be able to use other avenues to have those members on the apparatus.
Can I ask a follow-up question here?
Sure.
So, you know, let me just start by saying that since the beginning, since this whole thing was announced in the newspaper, I've been totally confused at the way it's been handled. Because the way that it was presented was the grant was, if you read in the newspaper, it was awarded to the fire department and then you were quoted in the paper saying that you were gonna accept it. And then we raised, council raised concerns and then the administration turned around and said, well, we share their concerns. Then there was a 30-day extension. But the grant had already been awarded and accepted. Then we get the grant on our agenda to approve it. So the whole thing has been backwards from the beginning, in my opinion. The second thing is if I read the grant correctly, your intention, and correct me if I'm wrong, is like, Mr. West and the mayor had said, well, jeez, in year four, if we can't afford this, if we can't afford the extra cost, we'll just furlough them. But if I read the grant, your intention is to maintain those 10 positions and to have 100 and whatever it is, 44 or 45 firemen. Am I incorrect in saying that?
No, if the city's able to, that will provide safe manning and reduction of property loss, life-saving abilities. It's to become in compliance with 1710. I understand the reality of our city as well. And I'm a steward of the finances for this city. I understand that as well and I take that job very seriously. And it's a balancing act. And I know that my job is to give that information to the mayor, the business administrator, so that they could put it up to you. So yes, I, I, there is a possibility that we might not be able to retain those positions.
So how do you, in the grant application, it states that one of the ways that you intend to retain these positions is that you're going to, the city is going to start a EMS service, a fire-based EMS system that will, that you, that is, it's claimed in the grant, it's gonna yield revenue. So can you explain, council was never made aware of any type of program and how you're able to sustain these positions with that sort of revenue? So can you talk about what the plan is and what the program is there?
So, Councilman, first, yes, and thanks for the question, but let me be clear about something. This was not the Larry West and the Paige Cognetti Show and this relates to the, to the application. Both chiefs are part of the administration as well. So the decisions that we made in regards to making applications, which again was before my time here, and the quote that was in the paper was my quote, and I did have some questions about it. And I, and I reserved that because at the time, I was not clear as to what was involved in it. But the chief was, was articulate in his messaging and had come around. And so the language you have in front of you, the process, it's not, there's nothing, and I know that you were not necessarily favorable, you were very public about it. But this isn't trying to split hairs between the administration and the fire department. We are all one administration. So I want to be clear with that, first of all. Second thing, as it relates to the long-term planning, and I said this privately to you and I'll say it publicly to you, making the applications for these grants, there are, there are, there are other administrations, levels of government bureaucrats that basically go through these applications. As part of that, and I'm not suggesting that what, what the chief had put out there was disingenuous, at some point, there may be an opportunity for the city to explore that. And we should be exploring all opportunities to increase safety and emergency services in the city. It's all about public safety. So to say that one thing is on the table and that is, that is all we're gonna do, that is not- that is not, it's not necessarily true. But the chief, I think, has articulated the reasons why and the documents as to why the SAFER grant would be a good thing for the city in relation to cutting down some of the overtime. And, and by the way, it's also going to train our next 10 firefighters that the federal government will pay for, that we don't have to pay them to do that. So, there, there are some benefits to it. Are there some questions regarding the layoffs to it? No doubt. Whether, whether it's, you're talking dollars and cents, or you're talking about political calculations, there's no doubt that those things are going to exist. But the mayor's been pretty clear in what her intentions are, that if the city, if she determines at that point the city cannot afford to retain those 10 firefighters, and it may not be those exact 10, because by the time we get through three or four years, there may be four, five, or 10 other firemen below, in terms of, in terms of seniority. The mayor's pretty clear about what her intentions are.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, in the grant application, and based on what was written in the grant, the intention, and if you read the grant, there is no two ways about it, that you intend to sustain these positions, because you want to meet that NFPA, get the number right.
17.
Right.
Yep.
So, what I'm asking you is, in the grant, it states, the, the question is from the federal government, how are you going to sustain these positions? And in the grant, it clearly states, "We will be able to use the revenue stream from the EMS system that we're working on," I'm paraphrasing here, "to sustain the positions awarded under the SAFER grant." So, what I'm simply asking you is, how will you do that? Give me the numbers, give me the plan. How can you sustain the positions using this ambulance system, this EMS system? And the reason I ask that is because, now, I won't be here next year in three years, but I am very concerned that in year four, whether you furlough them, whether you don't, whether you keep them on, no matter what way you cut this thing, it is in addition to our budget in terms of salaries, benefits, and legacy costs.
Yes, and, and it does state that in there. We were looking at a couple of different things. Right now, in the contract, the collective bargaining agreement, city has the ability to implement a QRS system. We have to have negotiations and talks with the, the unions to do that, but we've already gotten our, what's called a QRS license. It's basically fire-based EMS. So, right now, we've, we've been licensed, in August of this year, we were licensed by the state of Pennsylvania. We have the requisite equipment on all the apparatus to be able to implement such a service. And the reason we're looking hard at that is because, right now, and this is a nationwide problem, and we've had meetings with the Department of Health, we've had meetings with the hospitals and the local EMS providers. The wait times at hospitals are two hours for the ambulances sometimes. And instead of, you know, sending a police officer to somebody who's possibly having a stroke, or possibly having a cardiac event, where you have police officers who are only first aid and CPR trained, and our fire department has multiple paramedics, a nurse, and every one of our members is an EMT hired after 2005, but the majority of our members are EMTs, we have the ability to go out there and start that care early. So, we've already taken those steps, but there's the potential that it goes down that road, but we're still so early in the infancy of ambulance base system back in the city, that it's not really appropriate to talk about. But that's not what this was entailed to do, the, the funding. The city has about...
But Chief Judge, it does say that in, this is where I'm confused, because it does say that in the grant. And that, if you read the grant, and I didn't know anything else about the city, I would say, "Oh, okay, yeah, they're going to start a QRS EMS system, and that's how they're going to fund these positions."
We have a QR, QRS is different than an ambulance. QRS is an engine company or a ladder company going out to start care. It is the norm in the fire service across the nation, and has been for years. That's part of the job of fire departments anymore. So, we're in the early, we're, we're set up to start it. We need to have some discussions, make sure that we don't have any blind spots with the union to be able to implement it. But we're seeing our citizens in Scranton wait prolonged times for ambulances. I had the rescue truck doing CPR on a gentleman in waiting tent in the middle of the road on Main Avenue a couple of weeks ago, waited 10 to 12 minutes for an ambulance after their arrival. But that's what our members do. That's what our men and women in the Scranton Fire Department do. So, we're looking at alternatives to get this done, and there may be a possibility for a revenue stream related to that.
Just to follow up on that.
Sure.
Let's say that you do that, and it is successful.
Yes, sir.
You have, you're in year four now, and you're deciding whether or not to furlough these positions. Let's say the revenue stream, I don't know what the revenue stream looks like, because we don't, I don't see a plan for that yet. So, the, the notion that we can sustain the positions under this, the SAFER grant, after the SAFER grant expires, using that stream of revenue, I have an issue with. And, and also, if the idea, according to the grant, is to have more people ready to fight fires, wouldn't the addition of an EMS system mean that we'll have fewer people, because there's a chance they'll be on an EMS call when a fire comes in? So, aren't you, you know, in year four, you're going to say, "Well, jeez, how are we going to furlough 10 positions? We need these people because we've started up this whole new program."
No, I don't, I don't believe that to be the case, because the people that actually review this, it's a peer review process, and fire departments all over the nation, and just about every one of the third-class cities that I'm aware of in the state of Pennsylvania operates a QRS system. So, yes, but there could be a, an engine out on a brush fire, and a fire comes in, or lines down over West Side. There's always the chance that they're on a different call and not available for that fire, but that's why we have redundancies built into our system, and we have recall mutual aid agreements with other departments, such as Dunmore, to come in if we are short, because we're on other calls.
And you say that you expect 3,000 more calls a year. That's in the grant application, I believe.
Yes. So, based off of the status that we, or the data that I looked at, and it was from 2019, there's about 14,000, roughly 14,000 EMS calls in the city a year. We would only be going on major medical calls, which are ones where we can actually have some intervention that's going to, you know, hopefully save someone's life: cardiac arrest, strokes, shortness of breath, you know, C-spine injuries. We're not going to be going on every broken foot, toothache, like the EMS runs, our EMS agencies do now. There's a way under the, what's called the APCO protocols, that people are dispatched off of, and that the county employees here, that we would go on basically what we consider a Delta call. And we estimate that's probably about 25% or 20% of the total call volume in the city a year.
And you have an estimate on how much money you'd be able to make off each call?
Councilman, I, I think that's, that's a bit, that's a bit of a stretch. We're not really, we're not, we even get to that, that space. Let me, let me say two things. One, the city already pays for the fire, for the fire department and their members, for their emergency medical technician certifications. Not all of them, we do pay for them. We pay for them to get them, we pay for them to retain them, okay? That's a significant investment. It's also, not only a financial investment on behalf of the city, but it's also an investment on, on those members that are actually going through the training and retaining it. So, the fact that we, we are here to represent the folks in the city, and that we provide service, especially public safety services, I, I do have a, a scanner, and I listened to the radio, the very first week that I was in this job, I had it on, and that one week alone, I, I heard that the police department, on two separate occasions, responded on a call, one, they sent an ambulance, an advanced life support unit out of Carbondale with a 25-minute ETA on one call over to West Side, and the second call was to South Side, where they dispatched a medic unit out of Pittston City to respond to South Side. I, I, I think you know my background, I had a little familiarity with it, with the process. I had it on for about a week, and I turned it back off.
I understand that. I'm just asking, how do you make money off of this?
So, I'm, I'm saying to you that, it's, I, I understand, the chief had alluded to it, but it's not about, it's about providing the service, and if, certainly, we're not in the business here to lose money, okay? We can't afford to do those things. We're just getting ourselves out of Act 47. I think what you're asking for, and where we're at in terms of trying to, trying to decipher what it is the city is the best way to staff an ambulance service, or to pay, or to make sure that the folks in the city are protected by it, I think we're, we're far apart on that. We don't have those answers. So, is there, is there a way to provide service and allow it to be a revenue stream? I believe there is. To be, give you, to give you an accurate number right now, I think is unfair. I don't think we, we could do that with accuracy. That's something we would have to investigate.
And it says in the grant application, "What percentage of the declared operating budget is derived from the following?" Under EMS billing, you have that it's 1% of the 20, roughly $26 million budget. Does the fire department receive $260,000 from EMS billing?
I would, I would have to look at that, because it might be under, the billing might, we might have put that line item in there, because it was less than 1%, and it's not for EMS billing, it's for, it is to some degree, because every accident we go on, and you guys updated that ordinance earlier in this year, we bill for rescue services, and I don't think it allowed us to put less than 1% into that line item, because we do receive revenue from Pennsylvania Recovery for vehicle accidents and the care that we provide in that.
Okay. Can you give us a, when you get that number, can you give us an update?
Sure.
Okay. On page 14, it asks, "What are the anticipated," and I'm on the grant application now, "What are the anticipated annual costs per position per year?" It states that in, in year one, the average annual benefits for a, a first-year fireman is $24,849.36. Does that include the pension obligation?
So, I actually have a sheet for you. I can provide it afterwards. It gives you an actual breakdown of the healthcare, the, the pension contribution and the life insurance, because that was all calculated in, and that was given to me by the BA's office prior to Business Administrator West coming into office. So, those numbers were given to me by the, the office, and those were what was submitted.
Okay, so that $24,849.36, that's inclusive of the pension obligation?
That's correct. And that first-year number is actually wrong. There was an error between the, the narrative and that. I believe that went to 20, 28,858, I believe. And FEMA adjusted that accordingly to reflect that in the total grant total.
Okay. On page 18, it says, "Do you provide NFPA 1582 annual medical/physical exams?" Did you, the city answers yes. Is that correct? It's my knowledge. I don't remember ever seeing the city provide an annual physical exam every single year for every fireman.
What we're, we have it in the contract, and we're investigating that, but all of our entry-level firefighters go for 1582. And the reason you haven't seen it, Councilman, is because we've had great partners in the community that have done them for free for us. And the cost of those are substantial, those baseline tests. Geisinger Health Systems and Scranton, the clinics at Scranton Primary Health is now doing them, and they refuse to take a fee for service for those.
Oh, that's great. So, do they go, so is it a requirement for every fireman to go every year for one of those?
Anybody hired after 2015, there's current contract language in it, but any new hire, prior to being hired, has to pass an NFPA 1582 physical.
Okay. If the SAFER grant is approved, can the, is that, does that become then a minimum manning clause, basically, for the next three years? In other words, you cannot go under that amount, because you'd be violating the SAFER grant?
It becomes a minimum staffing only, is a requirement of FEMA. It's a minimum staffing number for that year. So, whatever we're budgeted at, we have to stay at that number for those three years.
Okay. So, how many, how many firemen do you have right now? 139?
We have, right now, we have 140 budgeted in the fire department, but that's not count, that's counting me and counting the payroll clerk. So, we have 138 budgeted currently.
Okay, so this additional 10 will take us to 148, and you have to maintain that for three years.
For the three years, and after the three years, there's no retention requirement.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, just quickly, in terms of current staffing, I, I know, you know, going back 10 years, eight years, we got into where we were in a position where we were browning out firehouses.
Correct.
Have we browned out any firehouses this year?
Since I became the chief, the mayor's not, we, and we both made the decision, no. It was only browned out in the beginning of last year, and most of that was done due to COVID. So, no, we have not closed any companies as a result of staffing over the last 18 months.
How do you calculate the, you know, there's this, there's this talk that in year four, we'll furlough them. How do you calculate how much it costs to furlough? You say here it costs the city $151,580 in unemployment, so that's $15,158 per position. What are you basing that on?
Not per position, for all 10 positions.
And what are you basing that number on?
Off of the Pennsylvania unemployment statute and regulations of, I believe, 26 weeks of pay at the maximum, times those 10 firefighters, and I believe that's the number I came to.
Okay.
Councilman, God, if I could again, I, I want to be clear about something. I, I don't take this job and, and come here with the intent that I'm, I'm very flippant about furloughing people. That's not the intent here. It's the description of what has to be, if that's where we determine in three years. I, I'm not sitting here happy about the discussion of having to furlough someone who uses this place, who uses the city or their employment for livelihood.
I didn't say you were.
I don't, you mean as if it was a flippant comment, as if I don't care about furloughing people. It's not true.
Oh, no. All I, all I'm simply stating, Mr. West, is that you, you said, you're in, on one hand, in the grant application, you're saying, "Here's how we intend to sustain these positions," but yet you cannot tell me how the plan works with EMS in, in terms of revenue.
That is true.
So, that's, okay. That's, that's number one. Number two, it states clearly in the grant application that the intention is to get the fire department to a safe staffing level.
Mm-hmm.
So, that leads me to believe, in year four, how are you going to turn around and say, "Okay, well, we'll furlough these 10 positions," if you in fact go through with the EMS system? If you in fact go through with the other thing that you have in the grant application in terms of ordinances that will require fire department staffing at all the major events in the city? So, that's what I'm simply pointing out.
Understood. And, and so, so all I'll say is, at the, at the end of the day, it comes down to, to what the city could afford. Understanding your point, I, I just wanted to be clear that, if this is not, again, a flippant point, where I'm just saying that we could just furlough someone as if it doesn't matter, because it does matter. The idea, the idea here is to use federal dollars to help educate our firemen, get the next level of trained firefighters teed up, to create a bench, so that we, we aren't chasing, and we, we as taxpayers aren't paying for that training. It'll actually be paid for. So, I just want to be clear that I don't, I don't take it as though we're just going to, you know, if we don't like it, we just get rid of them. That's not it at all. You asked for the answers what we do if, if we can't afford them. The answer is that we, we're out to furlough them. And again, don't take great joy in doing those things, but it's the answer, unfortunately. We'll do our best to not get there. The idea is to grow the bench and to make, make sure that we are growing the city. But, but if you're asking me the direct question, what happens? The answer is that they get furloughed. So, that's the answer. But I don't think it's just some easy, easy decision for us to sit here and say we're going to furlough 10 people. Not at all. I just want to be clear with that.
I wasn't suggesting that.
So, maybe I could say this, to clarify this. The two things we're talking about are two diverging points. To hire these people and to sustain these levels is one thing, and to get to the end of three years and then furlough is another thing. That wouldn't be the same goal. We wouldn't have the same goal in mind. We've been hearing for a couple days that we're going to build the bench. I don't mind the idea of building the bench. I don't mind offshoring our training to federal dollars to train these people to fill in for retirees that are coming in. I, I see that as sustainable, but what we're, these are two separate things. So, if we're going to get to a level of 150 firemen, but then bring that level down, that, that, those are the two things, I think, counsel, that doesn't make sense here. So, what is the goal? Is the goal to get to that many people and sustain that level? Because at that point in time, when we get into retirements or anything through attrition later on, after three years, we're going to have to hire to get back to that level. So, that's still going to be inevitably added to the budget. So, I think that's where my confusion comes in.
So, I think the, the goal is, obviously, to be compliant with NFPA 1710, but it's based on what the city's able to afford. So, and that's, those are the decisions that you, as the elected officials, have to make. And then, you know, from my level, I have to make sure that I'm able to provide, based on what you allocate, the safest possible situation for both the members in the fire department and the community. But, yes, the, the goal is always going to be, and that's required, you know, that's what SAFER's intention is, is that you become as compliant as possible with NFPA 1710. But if there's financial hurdles that the city must meet in three years from now, and none of us, unfortunately, have a crystal ball, we'll be able to do that. But the end goal is to reapply for that grant, and to be successful in that reapplication, to be able to have them assist the city with sustainability for those positions. You know, if, you know, our field has grown, we're going to have a 9% increase in call volume this year alone, and that's without implementing the QRS system. If we implement the QRS system, our call volume's going to go up by probably close to, it's going to close to double. But we have the bandwidth to be able to do that, and we have the trained members to be able to provide that level of service, so that the police officers don't have to go on those heart attack victims, and they can be focused and concentrated on what they need to. So, I, I get your point, and unfortunately, Councilman Schuster, I, I know that the conversation has kind of went that way, because we wanted to also give you guys the ability to know that if we're not able to sustain those positions, here's why it's still a benefit to the city. But the end goal, obviously, is going to be to attempt to retain those positions if it's feasible for the city, and we'll know that in three-plus years. And I, I would anticipate that we'll be able to stretch... And I would anticipate that we'll be able to stretch that grant to close to three and a half years based off of what we've done before, because the healthcare will be able to push that as well.
Yeah. So, I've heard some, like, differing opinions as to whether we could sustain the same 10 firemen with the grant. I was told at one point in time, no, it would be an additional 10 firemen. So, I wasn't really sure about that. So, I was happy to hear that if we were to reapply, we might be able to sustain these positions with the grant if we were to reapply.
Retention, yep, retention is a category.
One of the questions I saw, or I had, was how many retired, how many firemen are coming up for retirement in the next three years? And the answer I got was, it was just a simple sentence, 17.
So, I have right now 18 that can retire today. By the end of the grant, I will have 34 who are eligible for retirement. We average about 5.5 a year in retirements.
So, let me ask you a question then.
So, my question is, if we say have, say, 17, 18 right now.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have that for the next three years. What does the transition of these 10 firemen currently, or firefighters currently, what does the training look like? What is, you know, transitioning these people into these positions? We have to sustain the number over the three-year period, correct?
Yes.
We can't move them in as retirees happen, so we have to sustain it over the three-year period, but after three years?
No, FEMA gives you the ability, and they know, and that's one of the questions they ask, is when the academies occur. So, our academies occur January, end of January, and usually middle of August. So, as we have vacancies, that's when we push them in. And there's a lot of paperwork that goes back and forth between us and FEMA, but yeah, they know that you have to keep that number, but they also know that you can't, like, somebody retires today, you're not going to fill that position immediately. They understand that. So, they're, they understand what the lag is, and they also understand when our academies occur.
So, what does that lag look like? Say we have 10 SAFER grant firefighters currently, and tomorrow, three people retire.
So, we would, we would hire for them in January. January academy class starts, January 28th.
Would be, we'd be pulling the three firemen, firefighters from the SAFER grant?
You're talking about moving these out of SAFER?
Yeah.
It's cleaner, there's a couple of different ways you could do it, but what most departments do is they keep those 10 under the SAFER, keeps it cleaner budgetarily for that three-year period of performance. And that's how they were, that's how they were put in for the budget as well. So, first-year salary, second-year salary, and third-year salary, because we have a step system in the department. If we were just keep going back and, all right, well, this guy's now not SAFER, he's regular, and now the new guy is here, that's a kind of a, an amendment nightmare with FEMA.
Okay. So, let me ask this question. So, they have to maintain the minimum of 148 during the SAFER grant.
Correct.
So, say year, after year three, you know, it doesn't get renewed, so it can go back down to 138, and then you said within three years, there's not 17, there's probably double that can possibly retire. So, them 10 could go, so you can go back to 138.
Yes, sir.
Them 10 could cover 10 retirements, right? And then, they're here.
Yes.
They're not furloughed, they're not...
If they were laid off, per se...
Or even if they weren't, can't they just transition right in?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Say year four.
Yes.
10 people. You said potentially 30 could...
Oh, yeah, retire.
10 retire, the grant's not renewed, them 10 become permanent.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on the SAFER grant?
I had a few, if I can cut in here. I had some similar questions about the retirements that you did answer for me. So, I mean, I understand there's always going to be retirements or people who are out on disability, and that you need to have coverage and overtime for that. So, do you feel like there are enough people in the pipeline to cover at least 2022's upcoming retirements and, and the 10 that would be allowed in the SAFER grant?
Do we have?
You feel like you'd have enough people in the pipeline to cover those?
We have a civil service certified list, and yes, the backgrounds are being finished on a couple right now by Scranton Police Department. So, yeah, we keep an active list and usually keep, because the backgrounds do take some time, so as vacancies occur, we want to be able to send them. The last thing we send them for is their 1582 physical before we offer them a conditional letter of employment.
Okay. And then, I was hoping that you could provide a little bit more of a, at least a brief summary or justification for me, how you feel, you know, we're not operating at safe levels, why we absolutely need those 10 additional firefighters? Because it seems like a big number to me to jump from the 138 to 148. So, I was just looking for, just a little bit more insight as to, you know, how you came to that, that number for the grant, why? And I want to make sure that our city is as safe as possible too, and that you're able to respond to calls appropriately. But, you know, like, are you really stretching right now to where you don't feel like you can, you can make those calls or get there fast enough, or where, where does that, that come in, aside from the possible EMS piece?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to provide you some additional details I can give you, but I can give you a quick synopsis. Under 1710, under NFPA 1710, there's minimum response times, and I think we do well with the response times in most instances. But the response times are also based on the number of people that you can get on the scene of an active dwelling fire in the first eight minutes. So, while 10 seems like a lot, that's essentially three extra bodies per shift. When you factor in their vacation, Kelly days, time off and stuff, it comes to about 2.4, 2.4 bodies that would be there. But the way we're able to position them on different apparatus across the city will get us closer to that 1710, even one or two bodies. And there's been a lot of research, both medically and in the profession, that having that adequate number of personnel on the scene of a fire when it starts reduces injuries, reduces property loss, and increases survivability because there's a multitude of things that need to be done initially when that fire first starts. So, having that appropriate number right off the bat, even what you might think is not a lot, one or two extra staffing is substantial with the demand of the job that they have to do right in that first crucial eight to 15 minutes.
Okay.
But I'll be more than happy to provide you some additional, Doctor.
Thank you. And how, do you know how our numbers compare in terms to cities of similar sizes or the amount of firefighters that we have covering our city per, per residence? Are we pretty comparable in size or...
Yeah, I think we're pretty comparable, but it's also, it's not that simple of a question because of the age of our housing stock and how big of a city we are, as far as square mileage goes. 26 square miles with 80,000 people, and then you can go to Redding where it's 89,000 people in 8.2 square miles. So, the response times are a lot better because they don't have to travel as far, and we have to have stations that are in outlying areas. So, I think our comparables are pretty close, but it's, there's a lot of other factors to determine, you know, what those levels should be.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Solicitor Hayes, you have a question?
Yeah, if I could. Good evening, Chief Judge and Chief Nemecha. Thank you for being here, and obviously, thank you very much for your leadership in leading our departments and the vital services you provide. Chief Judge, the Council had asked me to take a deep dive on this SAFER grant because, to be honest with you, what typically happens is a grant application is submitted to us for our review and approval before it is, it is filed with the agency, the federal or state agency. So, first of all, I really don't understand what it is you're asking for us, because does FEMA or someone require our approval of this in order for the funds to be allocated or appropriated to the city? That's what, I don't understand what our role is at this point in time.
Not that I'm aware of. So, I'm not sure what they, where, what, how they, what their requirements are. And again, this was, this had gone in before my time, so I'll just react to once the award had come. So, I believe, I believe the City Council in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, you've accepted through legislation all grants, whether through always...
Not the SAFER grant, in my experience.
I, again, I wasn't here for their SAFER grants. I'm saying, my time here, you accept all the OECD grants, you accept all the...
Correct.
LSA and every other grant. So, again, if I was just treating this, or we're treating, the administration's treating it as any other grant, the city would accept the money.
So, I don't know if, in other words, if FEMA or the Department of Homeland Security need approval from City Council in order for this, for you to receive these grant funds? That's, that's my question.
I don't believe they'd need, I don't believe they'd need it, no.
Okay. And so, I think the questions that you're getting from Council is that, obviously, there's a lot of material that was included in the SAFER grant, it was quite educational to me, to, you know, highlights the challenges that your department has. For instance, I never knew that there was a problem with coverage with regard to the EMT, the private EMT services that are in the city. Things like that were very helpful for me because I wasn't aware of them. But to be certain, the grant application clearly states that, the question asked is, please provide a brief description of how the positions will be sustained, and in there are the application, and by the way, who completed this application?
I'm sorry?
Who completed the application?
I...
Okay, all right. The indication is, the city is in the process of implementing a fire-based EMS system that will potentially yield revenue as a result of this endeavor. The city will be able to use the revenue stream to help, this revenue stream to help sustain the positions under, awarded under SAFER. So, you can understand, this is news to Council, it's news to me, and obviously, that was represented to FEMA as part of this application. So, the concern that members of Council, I think, have is that by us approving this resolution, we're essentially validating what was represented to FEMA as part of this application. So, that's, that's where these red flags that are coming up with the EMS, we've never heard anything about this.
So, I could speak to that real quick. That's been in the contract since 1996.
Okay.
That the city can go down that road, and we've already started and been licensed as a QRS system. So, that's already done, licensing is on the truck. This is no cost other than the equipment, but the equipment was provided on the, it was, basically, was a very minimal cost to get us to the required equipment for QRS. But there's a potential, there's a couple potentials that I don't want to really speak to in public comment, or in public, about how the city would be able to leverage that. And those were some of the, those are some of the discussions that we've had, and it could be simple, they were simple discussions to start, but it was, FEMA doesn't want to give you the money if they don't think that you can sustain these. They also know that there's sometimes you can't sustain them because of finances and cities' fault, or, or have, you know, economic downturns that we know all too well here in the city. So, you know, they understand that, but they want to know, how is there a potential for you to be able to do this? And we saw this as a potential.
Was the proposal of developing this EMS program, was that submitted in prior SAFER grant applications by the department?
I would have to look at the other SAFER grants, attorney.
But that provision has been in the collective bargaining agreement since when?
What's that?
That, the ability for you to develop this EMS program has been in the collective bargaining agreement since when?
1996 contract, I believe, and then it was reiterated, I believe, again, in the Call Flesh Award of 2008 to 2014, which was, the contract essentially was upheld by the Supreme Court. It was addressed again in that contract, or in that arbitration award.
So, from 1996 to the present, the program still hasn't gotten off the ground, for whatever reasons that might be.
It's, it has started now.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, you know, my concern is, and is that, is to the accuracy of the information that's included in the, in the grant application, and Council having to essentially say that is correct. And that's why you're getting all these questions, and that's why I need to understand where we are in the process, in terms of what the federal government is expecting from us, if anything, in terms of validating this information and saying this is, this is a correct representation of where the department stands and what the department's plans are going forward. That's, that's my...
Let me just clarify something. You read it back to, you read it back aloud, and you said about providing EMS services. EMS services, that not necessarily indicate that it's ambulance service, by the way?
Mm-hmm.
Because actually, by a QRS, they are providing EMS services.
So, where, so they're not, you're not, your plan is not to develop an ambulance service? Is that correct?
I think it's too early to tell what's actually needed in the city. This has probably been one of my biggest challenges for the last year, is the EMS system currently in the city of Scranton. And it's become a nationwide problem as well, and we've talked, myself and Administrator West have met with the EMS providers, and we've also met with the hospitals. This is going to be a very complicated development of what we need to do to be able to provide this service. And we don't know exactly what that looks like yet, because we need to do a lot more research, and I'm sure that those discussions will come back before this Council, before anything's implemented in its fullest as far as developing an ambulance system. But a QRS system is currently in the contract, and it can also be an ambulance system according to the contract from 1996.
So, you understand that if Council approves this resolution, that that in no way authorizes the fire department to develop any ambulance service? You understand that, correct?
Correct.
All right. And you understand that if that was the case, you'd have to come back before Council to get that approval?
Absolutely. We would never take an endeavor under such as that without a lot of input from a lot of stakeholders, and we're very early in the infancy of that discussion.
Right. Well, thank you, Chief. I see it's 6:30, so I'll...
Sorry.
Wrap up my questions.
Does anyone else have any questions?
My last question is budgetary. When we're looking at the overtime, I know there's, with the SAFER grant, we're saying there's going to be savings in overtime. There is a decrease in overtime for this year. Is that due to the SAFER grant? I know that in the, in the budget that we got, it looks like the SAFER grant is included, and...
So, the SAFER grant, if we, if we do hire those positions, won't affect the overtime budget till probably mid-year, simply because we won't hire them till January, they won't be at the academy till the end of May, and then in training, and probably affecting the overtime budget by middle of June, end of July. So, but I do anticipate a severe reduction in, in overtime from the Scranton Fire Department.
Okay. As it is, or what I have in front of me, it looks like the Amendment 2021 has about $300,000 in overtime. I know we went over that this year, but the working 2022 is $25,000 less. Is any of that...
The $25,000 less is just, I think it's $27,600 if I'm not mistaken, correct? Or something like that, or 207?
$20,000.
Yeah. So, it was just a number, and listen, there's been a number of other initiatives to reduce that overtime. Myself and Chief Nemecha meet monthly with HR, the benefits coordinator, the case managers, the workers' comp attorney, and workers' comp carrier to evaluate cases and where the city needs to proceed, and those, those meetings have been happening so that we can get a better handle on those who are off on long-term disability or workers' comp. So, the reductions in there because of that, but I do anticipate, you know, in the second half of next year, having a severe reduction in that overtime cost.
All right, yeah, that more than answers my question, because I thought that was, the savings there was from the SAFER grant, but it's...
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
In terms of the professional services, that goes up from $30,000 to $92,700. So, what does that entail?
So, there's a couple of things that happened there, Councilman. I'll just, let me see if I can get it up real quick for you. So, under the professional services, right now, if you look at all the police cars in the city of Scranton, they are tied into a computer-aided dispatch system. The fire department is not. You go to any city cruiser that's patrolling the streets, they could tell you where all 1,485 hydrants in the city are, but the fire department has to use old mapbooks. So, we're in the, we would like to implement next year, and we've been working with the county commissioner, or, excuse me, the county comm center, to implement a computer-aided dispatch system for the fire department, where our officers will be able to see real-time updates on the calls, be able to determine where the hydrants are, because our hydrants have different flows. And that cost is about forty-nine thousand dollars for the implementation, and then there's a substantially reduced annual cost associated with that, but, and then the upfitting of the apparatus. We already have the computers purchased, it'll be about putting them in, and then that's about, that's about it. But I have a breakdown, the majority of that increase, Councilman Donahue, is going to be implementing the computer-aided dispatch for the fire trucks.
But that's in the professional services? Just because if you go down farther, too, which leads to another question about general equipment, that goes from forty, I know it was, you know, brought down from sixty-two-five in twenty-twenty, but it goes up to one forty-five-three-oh-two.
Yes.
For twenty-twenty-two.
So we've had the majority of our rescue equipment are essentially what people know is jaws of life. On a new rescue truck that will be coming next year, we have to order new rescue equipment, and our airbags are only good, our pneumatic airbags for lifting are only good for ten years, and those are expensive replacement costs, and we're past the life expectancy on both of those.
Okay. And then just the training and certification goes up another, it goes from one-oh-one to one-sixty-seven-nine-twenty-five? Is there any additional training that?
There will be some additional training, but the majority of that would be to send, we would be sending those ten people to, from SAFER to the academy, and I have a breakdown on the cost of that. A lot of that would be in that cost. So the training and certification's tied to that, it's also tied to EMS, excuse me, EMT and paramedic reimbursements, which we have more people who are now trained as EMT, so that cost goes up a little bit each year. So that's where the majority of that cost comes from, Councilman.
Councilman Donahue, is that only on the updated version we got today? Because the copy I have in front of me, it doesn't have those, the three pieces.
It's on the updated.
It's just the up.
I was just, yeah.
Because you had a piece I have in front of me, so with the, just those three line items, the first one has a sixty thousand dollar increase, the second one has like a sixty-seven thousand, and the last one has a hundred-and-five thousand. So that wasn't something I had in front of me before, I just got it tonight.